Okay, welcome to the Longdale on City Council, the regular meeting of Longdale, Longdale City Council, Monday, June fifteenth. I'm gonna ask the, um, city clerk, uh, city, city clerk to give us the roll call.
Mayor Protem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pullman Miles?
Here.
All members present.
Alrighty, thank you for that. Let's have our, um, flag salute, uh, led by Mayor Protem Bernard Eschore.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you, Madam Protem. Okay, let's have, uh, Captain Allen, he available?
Uh, yes, I am, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for June second through June fifteenth. The last time I spoke with you, Los Angeles County was in the middle of civil unrest. The city of Longdale was under a curfew and many people throughout the nation were living in fear and anger. Today, I'm happy to say that things have calmed over the past week or so. The county is no longer under curfew and law enforcement agencies have resumed normal operations. Though there are still protests occurring that remain peaceful and orderly. In fact, this past Saturday, a peaceful protest march was held here in the city of Longdale. The march was well organized, well attended, and very peaceful. In fact, deputies from Longdale Station assisted the marchers by providing a safe escort for them to City Hall. In regards to crime, the city's crime rate remains low. As I mentioned previously, the city's slight overall crime rate increase can be attributed to the increase of stolen vehicles that have been occurring throughout Los Angeles County. Fortunately, over the past month, we have seen a decrease in vehicles being stolen in our city. At the station, one of our primary focuses has been on the reduction of stolen vehicles throughout our station area. In fact, on June fifth, deputies discovered a chop shop just outside the city of Longdale. Down in the chop shop were several stolen cars, guns, and narcotics. Several persons were also arrested at the scene. These arrests should have an impact on vehicles being stolen throughout our area and especially in the city of Longdale. As always, I remind Longdale residents to do their part in reducing theft crimes by locking their vehicles and securing valuables out of public view. We continue to monitor the Great Western and Baymont Hotels. There's, there has been nothing to note in regards to criminal activity at those locations. Things have been very peaceful. Um, this concludes my report and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
This is Mayor Protem Suarez, I do have a question.
Yes.
Or rather, a, a comment. Um, so we've been getting a lot of, um, people inquiring about the fireworks, the illegal fireworks that have been going on. Um, I've even seen a few posts on Nextdoor about people like, um, commenting on how the, you know, they must not be giving out fines. So I know we've gone over this in the past about how fines and tickets are issued and how it's, you know, um, the process and how you have to see the individual with the illegal fireworks and whatnot. So maybe you could give a brief description of that.
Yeah, I mean, like, like all, um, fines and, and actually crimes in that matter, um, you know, the fireworks, uh, deputy does have to actually see the person lighting them off. I mean, just the fact that they come from a lo- certain location, the deputies get there, you know, they can inquire, but it's a ticket that's given to a person as an individual, not necessarily to a homeowner, et cetera. It has to actually be observed. Um, one of the things that the city has done is on the weekends, you guys have increased, uh, your fireworks, uh, patrol. City manager, um, city manager has arranged that so that, um, your SAOs are being used for that purpose, um, starting this weekend and obviously going into July fourth, July fourth, and then you're gonna be having extra patrols, obviously, for July. So we are stepping up our fireworks enforcement, uh, beginning this week. And so, um, hopefully that will have an impact on, on the fireworks, uh, problems.
Okay, thank you for that.
Uh, Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney, have a question for Captain Allen.
Um, yes, sir.
Um, today about between noon and one o'clock, there were, there was some kind of disturbance on one fifty-fourth and Hawthorne on the east side. I'll pull in, do you know what that was? You had five sheriff cars out there, you know, it was a traffic accident?
Um, no. Um, no, I'm, I'm not aware of what that would have been.
Could you find out, let me know?
I could find out, yeah, definitely, I'll find out for you and let you know though. It was a, you said between twelve and one o'clock at one hundred fifty-fourth and Hawthorne?
Yeah, on the east side of Hawthorne Boulevard. My apologies.
Okay, yep, I'll be able, I'll be able to find out for you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Captain Allen. Um, so it seems as though our mayor is having a little bit of technological issues right now, so I'll be stepping in to, um, finish the rest of the agenda until he be able to come back in. Um, so we will continue to, item D, oral communications. If our assistant city clerk can please read those.
Uh, yes, Mayor Protem, let me, uh, uh, I think I might be able to handle that technical issue real quick. Let me go ahead and step aside real quick and see if I can get them on.
You're stealing my thunder. (laughing) How are we looking there, Matthew? Are you able to dial him in again?
Somebody just called in, Bernard has called in, user number six. So I don't know if that's him or not.
Okay, I believe he's calling in, but if you'd like, I can start with, uh, public comments.
Yes, please, let's have the public comments.
Keep it moving.
Okay, uh, we have four, uh, oral communications. First one I'll read, Francis Cravas, Longdale resident. I've lived in Longdale for about twenty years. I am used to fireworks on the Fourth of July, which I put up with. But this year, some residents have started setting off loud fireworks a month early and very late at night. At first, I wasn't sure if these fireworks were fireworks or gunfire or explosions. I was not about to go out and investigate the situation at one thirty in the morning. The sheriff seemed unwilling or unable to investigate. I don't know if these fireworks are connected to the illegal fireworks that Longdale allows. At this point, I would favor outlawing all fireworks all the time. Longdale appears to be the only local area that allows so-called illegal fireworks and understand that someone makes money on the sale. But loud noises in the night depress property values for all of us and make life uncomfortable for a lot of people and their pet, and their pets. Perhaps the people making money can find some more socially beneficial way of supporting themselves that does not harm others. But if you can't outlaw all fireworks, the least, at least enforce the current ordinance that allows the use of fireworks on the Fourth of July. Second, public comment, Amber Avila Gomez, Longdale resident. This is a petition that has gone out on the Nextdoor app. It was only, only up for five days and got a lot of people who signed two oh, two seventy. I'm sure we can get more if we need to. Third public comment, um, Patrick McCown, Longdale res- resident. Literally every night since before Memorial Day, massive fireworks are being set off and they are ruining our lives. The current enforcement is a joke. The cops come out one time to comfort my neighbor and within an hour, they're setting them off again. We need nightly patrols and zero tolerance. With no more warnings. My mental health is suffering from living in an active war zone. Please do something, please help. And then the final public comment, Pam London, Longdale resident.
What?
When will this?
Hello?
Yep, you're on.
I just wanted to make sure I'm on.
You're on. You're listening to the whole meeting.
Go ahead.
Okay, final public comment, uh, Pam London, Longdale resident. When will the city begin parking tickets for street sweeping on residential streets? When will City Hall completely reopen? What about council and planning meetings? The continued rise of COVID cases, do we know why? Parties, work-related, or social distancing? The city has a, we need a permit sheet very poorly written. According to the sheet, you do not need permit, a permit to change your countertop, but you need a permit for plumbing and electrical. Most countertops have sinks. So many kitchens have garbage disposals. So when countertop replace, so when it, so when a countertop is replaced, the sink is removed, the garbage disposal is at a very, at very least disconnected from the sink. So this means you would need a permit, but there is not a notation to suggest this. I've questioned this for years with council, planning, and code, and I believe the city needs to correct this sheet. Codes in the city need to be addressed, corrected, elaborated upon, et cetera, to prevent the misunderstanding that exists. Each new time a new code is added or a current code is modified, I request that the code be carefully written to prevent misinterpretation. Sorry about that. There is one more public comment for oral communications. Last one, Randall Abrams, Longdale resident. For the last few months, the neighbors in Longdale have once again been bombarded with, by mortars. Last night, I made one of many calls to the sheriff's department and a, and was told the car would be dispatched. But there was the deputy, but it was the deputy's discretion once there as to whether they would issue the citation. This certainly does not sound like a zero tolerance approach. I found it to be, I found it incredulous that at the June first city council meeting, it did not appear that preparations had been made to keep citizens safe and informed. With now only one city council meeting to go, Captain Allen had to ask whether the city wanted a fireworks suppression team this year. One of the ki- city council members even asked whether there was going to be a fire booth, booth this year. What was more disturbing is that the city council would have, would even allow fireworks scenes in the current pandemic. Why would the city, why is the city council not interested in the health of Longdale residents? Longdale now has one hundred fifty-nine COVID nineteen cases, thirty-six so far in June. Additionally, what impact might the current civil unrest have on the capacity for deputy, deputy staffing in Los Angeles County should July fourth become an issue? After a record request, I received a document that fireworks applicants were required to submit by the beginning of, of May. These were detailed in a meeting that community development had on April sixth with the deadline for submittal on May fourth. Two years ago, the roadie club, club missed the mandatory meeting and were granted a booth after pleading before the city council. The minutes of the February twenty, twenty eighteen meeting reflect the requirements that are placed, that are in place for a reason. After failing to follow them, would not be tolerated. This time, two roadie club members attending the meeting with deadlines clearly spelled out by staff will once again fail to meet the requirements by submitting their plan a month past the due date. Residents have learned that the best approach to getting anything done is to, is to deal directly with city staff and the sheriff's department and bypass the city council. So many times residents have brought ideas to the council, but as they might impact the sales of fireworks manufacturers, they fall on deaf ears. Recently, the director of municipal services took, took quick action after our request and in coordination with public works posted more, no illegal fireworks signs in our neighborhood. The sheriff's department has been instrumental in notifying prob- problem neighbors on our street before the Fourth that illegal fireworks will not be tolerated. Sergeantess has become the unfortunate guru of fireworks and coordinates the recruitment and response of deputies to suspend the fourth cruising through this war zone. I would like to thank the city staff and the sheriff's department for coordinating with the residents as best as possible. That ends, uh, oral communications, public comments.
Who's Robert again?
Yep, this, well, you didn't lose me. Um, thank you for those, um, public comments. Thank you, Mayor Protem Eschore, for filling in while we're having a little technical difficulties there. Let's see if there's any comments from the, uh, council, um, on oral communications. Um, let's start with, um, Osborne.
Thank you, Robert. Hey, uh, just wanna say, uh, the Mayor Protem did a great job in your absence. Uh, anyway, yeah, the speakers on the fireworks are, are not exaggerating. I, I think kinda understating it. I don't think it's been a couple of months or even more, but I think it's been several months. Um, worst I've ever seen it, anyway, leading up to the Fourth. I don't know why, maybe it's part of the shutdown, they're just going crazy. But what a waste of money, my God. It's nuts and it's every night. And there's some idiots to the east of me who are doing it two or three in the morning, I think purposely to try and wake up everyone in town. But, um,
Yeah.
Somebody's got a better answer. I know we, I was thinking about this. This problem has been presented to a half a dozen sheriff's captains and a half a dozen or more lieutenants from the time I've been on council and, uh, it's, it's not going away. I don't know if banning illegal fireworks would have any effect at all either because the illegal ones are illegal by their name and nothing's happened. And I think a lot of the problem is, is just, uh, a way to catch them because we know, when we made the attempts on the Fourth, there's dozens of tickets and citations and confiscations of stuff that's happened. But the trick is, how do you catch some of these idiots when they're doing it from their backyards or hidden spots or doing it three in the morning when there's nobody really around them to watch them and then they run away? In fact, I did hear from a, a neighbor who stated that. Uh, they saw him do it over on the Longdale School District grounds and then run back into one of the apartment buildings.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, staff might come up with some more brilliant ideas. We've, we've thrown everything out, out there in the past about drones trying to watch the skies to people turning in, uh, tips, you know, like rewards. Um, there's, there's probably more we can do if, if us and staff can come up with any, or residents and other suggestions. I mean, just complaining about it doesn't really do anything. Anyway, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you for that, there. Um, Councilmember Reed?
Yes, illegal fireworks are just that, they are illegal. And we've all heard the challenges of why we have so much trouble trying to catch them. Uh, even around here, we've had a few along the block and I can't find out who it is. I can't track them, you know, by the time they shoot one off, they leave off and come back an hour later. And you just, it's a hard time to catch. Uh, I had a, actually a few complaints from this area over here and stood up real late one night and find them shooting them off from the Redondo Beach side of the freeway. It's like, they're just hard to catch. So it's a challenge, it's not falling on deaf ears, but, um, you know, safe and sane fireworks are one thing, illegals are illegals, and even if the city chooses, if the city residents choose to say no more fireworks, we're still gonna have this problem. That's all I got.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Kearney?
I think Councilman Osborne and Councilman Reed said everything needed to be said, so I'll pass it on.
Okay, yes, sir. Mayor Protem Suarez?
Um, yes, I think that with the, um, like, with the technology that we have nowadays, I'm wondering if anything has changed with regards to people reporting these fireworks. So I don't know if maybe our staff can look into that. I did see a council member from a neighboring city post some type of app or something where they, they're planning to try and use it so that residents can report it. So I don't know if maybe we can look into some of those things and what other options. Um, because this, this is a huge problem and it seems like if people do see it, it seems to be residents that are witnessing it and the police don't have enough time to get over there to witness the, the crime in action.
Yes. Is that all for you?
Yes, thank you.
Madam? Okay, you're welcome. Yeah, I'll just follow up, um, yeah, I believe it was last year we did look into, um, um, the possibility. I believe it was an app similar to, um, when you shoot, um, um, firearms in the air where they can kinda pinpoint where the, um, the firearms, um, actually came from. I believe we found that to be kinda cost prohibitive because it's very expensive. Um, in addition to that, obviously, it, it, it attracts, you know, the area, you still would have to capture the, um, the person actually in the act of discharging the fireworks themselves. Um, even though it, it could put you in the area, uh, but you still have to kinda, uh, witness it. When I say you, meaning the law enforcement, um, um, officer would have to actually, uh, witness it in order to, um, to write, um, the citation or to make arrest or what have you. That's the unfortunate part. Um, perhaps maybe the, um, it won't affect this year, but perhaps maybe the legislature or someone can give cities more, you know, enforcing authority. But as it stands now, it's really, um, challenging as, uh, one of the councilmen, I think Councilman Reed, um, I mentioned it, um, these folks know that they have to be called in the, in the, in the action. Um, and they know that not to have their whole stash on them, but to have a stash, you know, um, in their house and go to the school district, um, parking lot or in their backyard or what have you in event that they are, um, caught, they only caught with one or two, um, um, fireworks, illegal fireworks so that their, their infraction or whatever happens to be, be, um, reduced instead of their whole stash being confiscated. So that's a challenge. But we do hear the frustration, um, um, I've called the, um, the sheriff's department on many occasions, um, throughout, you know, this season and so have my neighbors. And quite frankly, a lot of these people who are doing the fireworks are our neighbors. It may not be a neighbor like Nextdoor, but they're somebody's neighbor. And, and for that amount of fireworks to continue, that tells me for some reason that neighbors are not, you know, basically they're not reporting because they're someone's neighbors. If they're not mine, they're not yours, they're somebody's neighbors. Cause it's not exactly as if people are, you know, going to another block or across town to discharge fireworks, they're someone's neighbor. So if we can get the cooperation of, um, those who see something, if they would simply re- report it, um, at least the sheriff's department can have, you know, an indication of, um, who might be discharging or what area might be discharging so they can stage some type of operation or what have you to capture them in, in the act. But we do feel your frustration and we'll continue to, to work on it. With that, I'm gonna close and put the comments in comments from the council. Unless the staff had anything they wanted to add to those comments, all of them was concerned with fireworks. We will advance our agenda to consent calendar. Item number five is the consent calendar. Um, what are the, what is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Uh, Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, pose.
On number four.
Okay.
Number, number three, excuse me.
Number three, okay.
Yeah, I think Kahono can handle this one. Uh, is he on the line?
I'm sorry? Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, we consult on this Kahono, I'm online.
Okay, uh, number, item number three, where'd you come up with forty-nine thousand dollars to extend the contract? I read the, I read it and it says that we still owe for twenty twenty?
Uh, Councilmember Kearney.
Yes. It says the staff recommendation is to contract some of forty-nine thousand dollars to extend the agreement to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And then you have numbers at the top that I'm perplexed with and then you want us to recommend, you recommend forty-nine thousand dollars. So you're saying that this contract, the current contract has not been paid yet? To twenty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty?
Good evening, Councilmember Kearney, this is Kahono. The current contract is ending, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty and the, uh, original contract is twenty-five thousand dollars. And each application, actually, the telecom law firm charges about, uh, twenty-two thousand four hundred fifty. And, um, basically, the estimate that we had before was about ten applications. And apparently this year, we receive only nine, uh, applications. And, um, but the contract is still twenty-five thousand dollars. And this, uh, new fiscal year, twenty twenty-one, we estimated that we will receive approximately ten applications. Uh, therefore, the additional contract will be twenty-four thousand five hundred. And that will bring the contract amount, the amended one is, uh, forty-nine thousand five hundred.
Okay, so we haven't paid the contract for, the one that expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty then, right?
Uh, we did. Uh, we paid nine, uh, applications that have been processed already.
Okay, well.
And if you-
I'll talk to you tomorrow about it. I don't wanna-
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then on number eight, Mayor? Is, uh, the one-
Yeah, continue.
I have a question for, uh, whoever, the city manager or community service directors. Why do we still have a, a fee on here for a Longdale beat and for the unarmed security service? I thought we did away with all of them.
Hi, uh, Mayor and city council members, uh, Mike Estes here. Uh, this Longdale beat, are we talking about one nine nine seven oh nine? I'm assuming MV transportation for forty thousand?
Correct.
That would have been the, uh, April bill, the last, uh, full month of billing. Just before, uh, just before we canceled service on May fourth. And that might be combined with the four days of service that we had March, or I'm sorry, May first through fourth. I'm not certain about that, but that's typically, uh, Councilman Kearney, that, uh, that payments typically run about thirty to sixty days behind. Uh, the other one was, can you ref- refresh my memory on the other one?
For the unarmed security service of a thousand sixty-five twenty-seven?
Yes, that, uh, contract runs through June thirtieth. So, uh, it, it looks like we'll probably have two more billing cycles for that. We're probably one behind and we'll have one more. So, uh, May thirtieth, or June thirtieth is coming quickly, but, uh, we will be free of those, uh, payments, uh, I would assume, uh, after probably the July sixth city council meeting, I'm assuming.
Okay, so we won't have any more of these forty thousand dollars for Longdale beat anymore? Just the last-
If we, I, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but if we see anything for the Longdale beat, it'll be a, a small invoice for May first, second, third, and fourth. But I, I do wanna mention something else if I can, is there will be another payment to, to MV transportation coming up soon because they are, uh, they are, are charging us for fixed assets, which is the depreciation of the vehicles, which is just part of the normal standard billing. Uh, but there will be a small charge for that once we work out some grant funding and get that taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Robert, that's all I have.
Yes, sir. Alrighty, thank you, sir. Okay, um, what is the pleasure of this body concerning the, um, consent calendar?
So Councilman Reed?
This is Mayor Protem Suarez. Oh. Either or.
Okay, that's Councilman Reed.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Reed and second by Suarez that we approve the consent calendar. Are there any discussions on the motion? Hearing none, would the council please vote? Um, Mr. Assistant City Clerk, give us the roll call, please.
So the consent calendar, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullman Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Alright, thank you, sir. Okay, we're at item, um, twelve, under administrations, and your twenty nineteen general plan housing report. Let's have this one reported.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council and the public. This is our annual, this is Sean Moore, uh, Director of Community Development. Uh, this is the general plan progress report that summarizes the city's progress towards implementing the goals, policies, and programs of the city's general plan. It covers the period from January first, two thousand nineteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand nine. Uh, Longdale has seven required mandatory elements, including two additional, an economic and air quality element. Uh, the community department maintains the general plan and monitors its implementation. Uh, the planning commission and the city council oversee the effectiveness and relevancy of the general plan and its implementation thereof. The annual report describes the regional housing needs as well as the, the goals and policies uh, within each containing each element and which goal and objective we have reached yearly. And this report covers that annual, uh, report in terms of where we're at, how we've been doing and what, what's been going on at the park. So briefly, the, uh, annual report is, you know, again, it's a- So briefly, the, uh, annual report is, you know, again, it's a summarization of the actions undertaken. Uh, there were three thousand twenty-four recorded counter visits to community development last year. A hundred twenty-four site plan reviews performed and processed. Eight hundred and forty-nine building permits were issued. With the department adopted a shared mobility, uh, device ordinance. We also, uh, brought in several new businesses, uh, for commercial businesses and filled up empty spaces throughout the Hawthorne Boulevard, specific plan area. Some of those businesses that were opened up in, uh, two thousand nineteen include the Target store, the Pet Boys Repair Shop off of Inglewood, the client's liquidation, combination boxing, uh, workout gym and, uh, other projects that are still in the process of seven-eleven. And dental offices are going through the plan check, as well as a WSS, uh, WSS shoe store outlet that's, uh, scheduled to go in the old former ninety-nine cent building. Some of the other things that we've completed, uh, towards meeting the general plan and how they requirements, we prepared the residential design guidelines. If the council recalls, they adopted those guidelines last year. We completed, uh, we've been updating and modernizing the zoning code, but we're gonna be doing that again with the updates to the general plan and Hawthorne Boulevard's plan. We'll do that comprehensively, so that's in the works. Um, the general, we're gonna be updating the housing element as part of the general plan, so that'll be coming up. We're, uh, working with developers and residential and commercial and industrial areas throughout the city to incentivize them to come in by fast-tracking them, one-stop shop, just try to get them through the process and walk them through. We've been doing that on a, a yearly basis. Um, we're still looking at the, uh, we're still looking at the reduced urban runoff, working with Public Works. We updated SEQUA guidelines for development. And that kind of covers some of the main projects. The proposal is exempt under SEQUA. Uh, the commission did review this report and recommended approval to forwarding on to city council. There are no fiscal impacts. The city attorney's office has reviewed the resolution for performance. Therefore, staff recommends approval, so we can forward the report on to the, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development, the governor's office of planning and research for filing. This concludes staff's report. We'd be happy to answer any questions. May have this time. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the report from the council? Okay, see, and, uh, let's entertain a motion to accept the report.
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendations.
Yes.
With, with attachments.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made to accept the re- report along with attachments from Councilman Kearney.
So Councilman Reed, I'll second it.
Councilman Reed has seconded the motion. Are, are there any debates or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, with the council, please vote. Let's have the roll call, Assistant City Clerk.
Item twelve, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's continue with the item thirteen concerning the November third general election, municipal election. Let's have staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and, uh, members of the city council. The item before you pertains to the city's general election, which is scheduled for November third, twenty-twenty. Um, to start the process, the city council must adopt three resolutions. The first resolution, two thousand six dash thirty-one, and recommendation officially calls for the election to be held to elect mayor and two members of the city council. Formerly designates the assistant city clerk as the elections official. Calls for a special election to be held should there be a tie vote. And acknowledges requirements in state and federal elections laws and regulations. The second resolution, uh, two thousand six dash thirty-two requests the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors uh, consolidate our municipal election with the statewide general election. And its approval would result in our ability to receive the necessary support and services from the restaurant recorder's office for the election. Uh, the third, uh, resolution, two thousand six dash thirty-three adopts the regulations and formatting requirements with respects, with respect to the candidate statement for this election. Um, as a note, the nomination period for the November third, twenty-twenty election will open up July thirteenth, twenty-twenty. Uh, for more elections information or to register the vote, uh, please contact the office of the city clerk. This concludes staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the staff report? Okay, see, and, um, let's see, we need a motion for this, uh, ten we deal with.
Uh, Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney again. I'll make a motion.
Councilman Kearney.
Recommendation with the, with the attachments.
Okay, so it's been, let's move that we, um, accept the recommendation along with attachments by Councilman Kearney. Is there a second on the motion? Okay, I'll second.
This is Mayor Protem Suarez. Oh.
Okay, I'll beat you. Thank, thank you, Matt. By Mayor Pullman Miles. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, with the city clerk, Assistant City Clerk, um, give us the roll call.
Item thirteen, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Item fourteen is an update on the use of the Best Western Hotel in the Baymont. This is staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. This is Michael Reyes, Director of Municipal Services, and the purpose of this staff report is to update you on both Project Room Key hotels currently operating in the city of Londale. The Best Western Plus South Bay and the Baymont Inn began taking homeless individuals on April twenty-third and May twenty-seventh respectively. And to date, both hotels are quickly approaching full capacity. City staff continues to make twice daily visits to each of these two properties in order to monitor the daily activity of each hotel. As of this afternoon, the Best Western has ninety-four rooms occupied with one hundred and six clients. And the Baymont Inn has ninety-four occupied rooms housing one hundred and three clients. This is a combined increase of seven additional clients being housed over last week. And speaking with the path and first-to-serv homeless service providers that are operating these hotels, the immediate goal is to work with clients and get them acclimated into a more structured routine so they can eventually move out of the hotel and into long-term housing. To date, there have been no significant incidents of criminal behavior suspicious activity. Security continues to be present twenty-four hours a day at each of the hotels and sheriff's deputies have resumed being stationed at the hotels for a few hours each day. Case managers for the clients are on hand at the hotels, as well as medical staff to check temperatures and monitor the health of all clients. Estimated annual funding requirements are unknown at this time, although city staff and sheriff's deputies are monitoring the hotel, resulting in a reduction in time available for other duties. Staff will continue to provide city council with project room key updates at all city council meetings for the duration of project room key. Staff recommends that the city council receive and file their report and provide direction to staff as appropriate. And I can answer any questions if you would like.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the report?
This is Jim and I have one.
Let's go with ladies first.
It's just a quick question. Our, is, and this is to, uh, Michael, thank you for, for your diligence with, with regards to the, with the two hotels. I know you've been working very hard on, on, on keeping us updated. Um, do we get the numbers or the, not the numbers, the areas from which these individuals come from? I'm just curious. I'd like to know if they are primarily South Bay or where they're coming from.
Um, we, we have a contact with Lotta that we, that I communicate with, uh, usually a couple of times a week. Um, I have asked that of her. Um, I didn't really get a great answer. They did say forty-four of the, of the current tenants in the Baymont are from the South Bay. Uh, but it was my, about South Bay area, which is SPY eight in terms of the homeless outreach service providers. Um, but I was, my understanding at the onset of these, um, hotels that everybody was gonna come from SPY eight, a hundred percent. So if only forty-four people are from SPY eight, that, that is, asks the question of where are these others from? Um, but I could look into that further. But a- as of right now, I, I'm, we aren't told for confidentiality reasons, reasons where some of these people are, who they are, where they're coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jim.
Now, I'll talk to Mike offline.
Mike, I just have a quick question. Are they continuing to, um, to look at, um, homeless individuals here in Londale that may be ineligible? I know we did have a, a number of individuals that, when the program first started, that was, um, accepted into the program. Are they, are they continuing to, um, to canvass the city to see if we have some, um, homeless, um, individuals that's eligible, uh, for the program?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, my team is still doing daily outreach. We still enter homeless individuals into the LEHOP system on a daily basis. Um, some of that service has stopped or, or slowed because of the virus. So, so the county providers aren't doing as much outreach as they were previously. And a lot of them are tied up with the Project Room Key's staffing wise now, so they're not doing as much outreach. But our staff is still doing it daily. Um, one of my officers and I went out Tuesday of last week, uh, to the four oh five in Manhattan Beach Boulevard, uh, the underpass, and we spoke with Mary Ann and Carlos, two of the homeless that live there. Um, they don't have phones, so we actually put the call in. We were on the call for about forty minutes. Um, they were not accepted because they don't have any ailments and they're not over sixty-five. Um, that's also been true of a number of the other homeless that we've talked to. We've made calls for them, with them, and they don't qualify. So, um, in the event of, um, the recommended person that, um, Councilman Suarez, uh, was, was speaking of earlier, he was qualified because he was over sixty-five. Um, but for a lot of them, if, if they don't have, uh, medical ailments or the age requirement, then they, they aren't allowed to enter the hotel.
Okay, alright, thank you. Anyone else?
Councilman Kearney?
Yes, sir.
I don't know about the rest of the council staff, but I've seen an influx of newer stranger individuals coming into our city. I don't know if the council has seen that or staff has seen that. There's some people.
Yes, I have.
Um, uh, Councilman Kearney, I think you, uh, we, we are aware of that. We've noticed that a number of these residences have come in or not people that we had contacted months ago. Um, we imagine that they're hearing about the hotel and, and making their way in or being told about the hotel and, um, being encouraged to come into our city. Um, there are, uh, in the first few weeks of Project Room Key, um, because they took so many of our homeless off our streets, we did see the streets significantly cleaner. Um, we are noticing a lot more homeless now that, um, we didn't know a few weeks ago.
Okay, thank you. I know there's only one city, South Bay City, with a, a homeless shelter, and that's La Bida, than the whole South Bay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
This is Councilman Reed. Um, I too have noticed the same thing and, you know, we've kind of talked it out, um, where our restrictions were put in place on these things. Um, but we still have the issue of trying to get these new folks back out of our, um, areas without causing any problems. So, knowing the challenges that are there, I, Michael, I still appreciate that we get some due diligence to get these taken care of.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll, we'll work very hard enough, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have some more comments, but I think we need to, I think I need to hold those until we've had our, uh, public inquiry.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that, um, that report, for those comments. Let's move to item fifteen, um, concerning the modification of.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, point of where.
You still wanna do it? Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, no, we do have a public comment on this item.
Okay, let's have the city, uh, city, um, clerk, uh, read that public comment, yeah.
Alright. Uh, item fourteen, uh, from Pam London, resident. I want to be clear, I agree with that homeless people need to be protected from COVID nineteen. Do not have a solution and understand that Project Room Key was the one put for, put forward. My issue is and remains with the idea that Londale did nothing to avoid it. Our city manager did nothing, our council did nothing. The Best Western in Londale became a temporary homeless shelter. Still, there was no action to discourage other hotels from converting. After the Best Western conversion, I asked if there were others considering converting. The question was mostly avoided. I asked if the city was contacting other note, notels to discourage more conversation, again, mostly avoided. And, and another meeting, I asked again, and the mayor suggested another was in the works, but had not committed fully. And now Little Londale has the Bayview conversion as well. A city less than two square miles has two notels converting to homeless shelters on, on the city's main boulevard. Spectacular. Each city would never allow this. I believe those cities would have their heads on sticks after residents dismembered them. Londale did nothing. How many more notels will convert in Londale before someone steps up to the plate and accepts responsibility? Who do you view as responsible to the residents of Londale to try to prevent further disruption, further destruction? Is anyone trying to, to find out if these notels are part of the governor's plan for permanent homeless shelters? Does anyone care? I've asked multiple times. Is anyone trying to get an honest answer? Or are you just sitting back waiting for them to ram that down our throats next? Has anyone asked how Project Room Key will handle the residents that they brought into the city? Where will they go? How will they get there? Will they, will they be turned out onto the streets and left without assistance? Who would the city of Londale will care enough to ask these questions and continue to ask until they receive an acceptable answer? Again, who is responsible? When the stuff further hits the fan, who do we blame? Who will answer for this major screw-up? Are our deputies continuing to spread, to spend part of their shifts at these hotels? How much of their time is spent at either notel? We have so few deputies and the idea that they are being removed from patrolling our streets is criminal. Previously, we were told of a woman whom escaped from the hotel was apprehended by the deputy and I believe later expelled from the program. These hotels are not prisons, but she escaped? What is the purpose of the security guard? Has the deputy not been there? Would the security guard have handled the situation? Why are their notel owners not required to provide their own law enforcement officers? They seem to be the only ones benefiting from Project Room Key. Residents of Londale should not pay the price for notel profits. Has anyone noticed the presence of more homeless individuals in our city? I see more people that I do not recognize. Is anyone offering these people a room at the notels? Are they here because of the shelters or is it a growing number for our city in general? Is anyone asking for an update, updated count when the shelters disband? Should this be a consideration for the near future? That ends the public comments for item fourteen.
Okay, um, thanks for the public comment. Yes. Let's see, um, there was a lot of questions, um, um, in there. So let's, um, some of these we may not be able to answer today, but if the staff can kind of, um, look at some of these, um, questions and maybe get some answers, um, enforced at a subsequent meeting, that'd be great. Um, I tried to write some of, I wrote some of them down, but, um, we'll get it from, um, from the Assistant City Clerk. There was a couple of questions in there that, um, that need to be clarified. So with that, let's go to item number fifteen. Uh, thank you for that, uh, council member for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, I did have just a couple of comments before we closed up on that. Um, you know, I, I totally understand the frustration. Um, however, at the same point in time, if Londale was doing nothing, why did the supervisor, one of the board of supervisors in the county slap us down on the LA register? So, we have been doing as best all we, we can in order to address these, many of those same questions we have already asked. And, uh, there is a workshop that, uh, our city manager is attending to talk about the exit plan uh, from the pushing that we've been doing from there. So from that, I, that's all I want to say about that subject.
Okay, thank you for that, counsel. Okay, item fifteen is, um, consideration for further modifications to the city operation. Let's have the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, Mike Estes from, uh, Director of Security Services. Uh, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and ongoing safer-at-home and shelter-in-place orders, the city made formal operational modifications on March sixteenth, April sixth, May eighteenth and June first, at which several city special events and other programs were canceled. In January, the inaugural Londo Music Festival date was set by the Parks Recreation Social Secure, uh, Services Commission, uh, who's the funding body, for Saturday, July eighteenth. That date was set back in January once again. Uh, in March, when the city staff began recruiting bands to play at the event, the COVID nineteen pandemic had just began to take hold and was unclear how severe the pandemic would get. However, knowing that the pandemic could get worse, city staff discussed Saturday, I'm sorry, Sunday, September thirteenth as a potential alternate date with each band. Subsequently, three of the four band leaders confirmed that they are available to perform on this date. If necessary, a second dairy check, uh, just this past week, uh, reveals that all four bands are now available to play on that date. Um, the inaugural Londale Blues Festival will be funded by the Parks Recreation Social Services Commission through the Fireworks Trust Fund account, made up of revenues collected from previous fireworks stand fundraising efforts. So once again, uh, uh, talks back in, uh, March reveal that all four bands are available to play on. So once again, uh, uh, talks back in, uh, March reveal that all four bands are available to play on September thirteenth, if we're even able to have, uh, the event on that date as well, or the Blues Festival on the twelfth. Staff recommends that the city council postpone the July eighteenth, two thousand twenty inaugural Longdale Music Festival, and reschedule the event for Sunday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty, following the eighth annual Blues Festival on Saturday, September twelfth, two thousand twenty, at Jane Adams Park. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you for that report. Um, are there any questions of the report?
Uh, this is Councilman Kearney.
Yes.
I'm okay with having the Blues Festival if it's still available, but I don't think we should have the next day for the inaugural Blues, uh, Music Festival.
Yeah.
I think we should just keep September twelfth as the Blues Festival and try to do the inaugural Blues Festival next year.
Yes, I definitely agree. That was going to be my comment.
No objection.
Okay, so yeah, let's, let's, let's do that if there, if there is no objection. Let's stick with the, um, the Blues Festival. Let's, um, postpone the inaugural, uh, Music Festival until next year, same date.
Gives them more time to prepare anyway.
Yep. Okay, sound like we have unanimous consent on that item. Okay, thank you for your report. Uh, let's hear from the city manager.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Um, just two items to report, and it's more for clarification. Uh, regarding, um, uh, law enforcement for illegal fireworks, um, there are two elements. So, uh, we will continue to do what we've done in the past in terms of, um, enforcement on the Fourth of July. So we are working with the Sheriff's Department now in putting together that team, uh, to provide that enforcement, um, on the Fourth of July. But prior to the Fourth of July, there is a, a second element, um, that we will have, that we will have in place, as the captain mentioned. Um, we are, um, uh, redeploying our SAO deputies, uh, to split their time between working to monitor the hotels, the Project Room Key hotels, as well as, um, to spend time also on, uh, illegal fireworks enforcement. Um, and this is as a result of, um, the concerns heard from city council as well as our residents. So, um, it's, um, you know, it, it is a frustrating situation, but this is, um, you know, something that we can do. Um, it's proven, you know, somewhat, uh, effective in the past in terms of us being able to, um, uh, find those that are setting off these illegal fireworks. We have issued fines in the past, so we'll continue to do that, and hopefully that will be somewhat of a deterrent for others, uh, doing the same. Um, the second item I wanted to, to, to provide some clarification on was regarding, um, what we're calling the exit strategy for Project Room Key. Um, and again, this is something that, of course, our city council is concerned with, but, um, all other cities that have Project Room Key hotels in their community, um, it's, it's what they're concerned with as well. And that's what happens at the end of Project Room Key. What happens to the homeless guests that are at the hotels? Um, you know, the concern is that they don't, um, they aren't, uh, left on, you know, the, the local city streets. Um, so with that in mind, um, I've been working with, um, the California Contract Cities Association, and, um, we've been able to form a committee, well, we're, we're in the process of forming a committee of city managers working with, uh, the county, um, so that we can have direct discussions with them so that we can put together, um, a, a solid plan, a plan for, uh, what exactly will happen with these homeless folks once Project Room Key is over. Um, you know, I, I don't know exactly where this is going to end up, but, uh, we will be pushing for, um, the county to find some form of housing for them, whether it's temporary or permanent, um, housing outside of the host city location. So anyways, I just wanted to provide that for clarification.
Can you speak to the, while you're on Project Room Key, can you speak to the issue of whether or not, um, the hotels are part of the governor's, um, initiative to, to purchase or to use long-term, um, leasing opportunities for, uh, for housing?
Right, yes. So, um, there has been discussion about that, of course, and I, I think the governor even mentioned it last week sometime as well. Um, but the only concrete, if you will, um, uh, only concrete issues that we've heard so far is that, um, the corporate Motel Six, uh, hotels, um, are expected to be purchased for, for that purpose, for permanent, uh, shelters. Um, our hotels, there, there hasn't been any talk of that. Um, it's not included in the agreements with those hotels, whereas I think it is in some other hotels. So, you know, but if that were to occur, um, that would be something that, uh, we would want to, you know, walk with the council and, and, um, uh, consider our options for, um, you know, preventing that from happening.
And so also, can you, um, can you speak to the, the, the other hotels? Um, are they aware of the city's, um, position on, on this project?
Yes, um, I believe it was, uh, early last month, uh, we, um, contacted the hotels. We, uh, visited them in person and also sent them letters, uh, letting them know what the city's position was regarding, um, homelessness in general a, as well as with Project Room Key. And we, we let them know in, in no uncertain terms that it was, uh, not something we believed was beneficial to, to the community. So, uh, those hotels, uh, do know, um, and even the hotels that, um, um, are Project Room Key hotels, we've let them know our, our, our position as well. We've let the county know, you know, our thoughts and the fact that, um, we're very, um, upset that the county moved forward with, um, with this program without our knowledge, without consulting with us, without, um, uh, talking to us and getting our input, answering our questions and concerns. So, um, you know, we, we have had several meetings with, um, the county, uh, with their county council. Um, and, um, unfortunately, the situation is that because of the emergency declaration that was issued by the county, um, they have a lot of power, um, in this regard, and the courts have, have backed them up. Um, you know, we did consider, the city did consider, uh, various administrative remedies to prevent the hotels from, uh, opening up as, uh, temporary homeless shelters. We looked at, um, other legal options, and they just weren't viable. In fact, we, um, have seen, uh, by example, other cities in our same situation that have tried to take legal action, and they were very quickly tapped down by the courts, um, in favor of the county. So, um, we, we have done, um, you know, we have looked at, um, the various options available to us, and unfortunately, they just, um, you know, weren't good options for us and, and weren't going to be fruitful for us.
Okay, and let me just say, I, I know you mentioned that we sent, um, letters to, um, all the hotels, but even prior to that, my understanding, this was even prior to, before even the Baymont entered into an agreement, that they were fully aware of the council's and the city's position, um, before they even entered into a contract, um, with the county and just disregarded and just did what they felt was in, obviously in their best interest rather than anyone else's, um, interest. So it was, it was not as if they were not aware of it. So although we, we sent a letter, like you said, last month or in a month or so, uh, to all of the hotels, the hotels, in fact, were aware of the city's position, including Baymont, um, be, before they entered into, um, the, uh, agreement with the county, um, even though they received the letter last month, I mean, a month or so ago. I just wanted to clarify that, um, as well. So with that, is that, um, you have anything else you want to add on that? Is that?
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any, um, any, um, comments from the council on the, um, city knowledge report? Okay, let's, um, let's move to the mayor and city council members' report of opinions. Let's start with Mr. Osborne. Councilman Osborne, yeah, not, okay. Councilmember Reed?
Yes, so, uh, no city meeting since our budget meeting. Um, however, I have met with two separate, um, residence concerns. Uh, one in the central Longdale in regards to voicing concerns about, uh, the conversation in the city parks. Uh, we discussed some details in, which we had already had, that they were unable to attend the meeting and get. So I brought them up to speed on that. Um, and then on Central West, I had, uh, a meeting with the one sixty-third street residence, uh, person who was speaking up for everyone in regards to the issues of homeless going in and out through that, uh, railroad right-of-way fence that's been torn up and torn down again. Um, so we've got some, I have city manager to reach out to, um, railway in regards to that location, as well as just to be aware of, of what's going on and get a patch back into that fence. Uh, that thing's forty years old and is beat badly, so we do definitely need to get something done with it. And that's all I have.
Okay, yeah, there's at least, um, at least three points of entry, um, on the, the, uh, railroad right-of-way, um, that's been breached for a while.
Yes.
So they need to look at, and it's not just the homeless using it. Um, I see people all day because I live right by it.
Yeah, exactly. So it's just, uh, that particular hotspot, the homeless have started coming through, and we did discuss that there are other locations there, and we need to deal with the whole, uh, the whole stretch.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, um, for the report, Mr. City Manager. Okay, we finished City Manager. We're at, at home here. Okay, so that would be comments from Councilmember Reed and Councilmember Pat Kearney, isn't it?
Yeah, I, uh, I attended by Zoom the Lobby Trust and Oversight Committee while I was multitasking with the, my granddaughter's graduation drive-through from Longdale High, which Robert attended. Also, I attended the Black Lives Matter rally with the mayor, not a protest. And also, I want to wish every, everybody, all the fathers out there, Happy Father's Day, and have a safe and sane Fourth of July, and that's it.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Suarez?
Um, I think I just attended the South Bay City's Council of Government Steering Committee. Nothing reportable there, and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I too attended the, the family march that was held in Long, in Longdale from the school district parking lot to the, um, library, um, on Long. Also attended the graduation ceremonies of Longdale High and, if it's losing your high.
That other school.
That was for you, Pat.
Yeah, the other school. You went to that school. Better school.
Um, okay, and, and I probably had meetings with at least, um, six residents, um, two concerning fireworks and two concerning, um, uh, police reforms, and the other one was from Mr. Lane. And one was also about the, um, the school, um, parks, or the parks and schools.
I think we all had a conversation with that individual.
Yeah, okay, with that, that's all I have. Next item on our agenda tonight, uh, we do have a closed session. It's like we have two closed, um, sessions. We have one, which is a conference with legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation. And we also have a public employee performance evaluation, both of which are in closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us a provision of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council will meet in closed session on two items as you referenced. The first is to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, to consider whether to initiate litigation in one case against the Best Western Plus South Bay Hotel, Baymont Inn, and the County of Los Angeles pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D four. And the second is a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven B. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll reset the close. Okay, so we're ready?
Yes, we're in.
Okay, so we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session on two items as agendized as items J seventeen regarding anticipated litigation and J eighteen, a public employee performance evaluation. On both items, the council was updated. No reportable action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those reports. Okay, it's adjourned, adjourned time. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, July the sixth, two thousand twenty. We are hereby adjourned.
Hi, John.